Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Tonight, we're beginning with an open session. We'll start with a moment of silence and public service announcement. Then at 6:35, we will have a JO poll hearing on about four polls on Podunk Road and Highway 49. That will begin in a few minutes. Then we'll move into a town administrator's update. Then we have action items that include consideration of possible action to confirm the appointment of Seth Manser to the Agricultural Commission for a term to expire June 26, 2026. Consideration of possible action on the appointment of Florencia Sagrano to the Conservation Commission effective July 1, 2024. And then on the C, consideration of possible action to confirm the reappointment of Ed Goodwin to the Conservation Commission with a term to expire June 17, 2027. D, consideration of possible action to approve ARPA funding for the Gaga Ball Pit. And then Action Item E, consideration of possible action on a transient vendor application for Northeast Cutlery collectors from September 15, 2024, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Consideration of possible action on a one-day liquor license for Hamilton Rod and Gun Club on August 2, 2024, from 2:00 p.m. to 1:00 a.m. and August 3, 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. for a car show at 24 Hamilton Road. And then on G, consideration of possible action to confirm the appointment of Dale Gagnia to the Sturbridge Tourism Association for a term to expire June 30, 2027. And then H, consideration of possible action to confirm the reappointment of Jasmine Bell to the Sturbridge Tours Association for a term to expire June 30, 2027. And then I, consideration of possible action, a naming of the water tower currently listed as St. Anne's Water Tower. And then J, consideration of possible action on dock permitting, docking, dock permitting in our duties as a harbor master. K, consideration of possible action on the donation of $525 gifts, cards to Shaw's from Hollis Turnbow on behalf of the Mission tram of the, Mission's tram of the Federated Church. L, consideration of possible action on town administrator's percentage increase. Consideration of possible action on the memorandum of agreement dated June 28, 2024 between the town of Sturbridge and Teamsters Local 170. Then there's old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, Citizens Forum, and then we will adjourn. We have a couple minutes until we start the public hearing. Robin, do you have a moment? Take enough time to get through your...
Yeah, actually I do. Very quickly, this month, the WRTA nominating board asked if I was willing to accept the nomination to the executive board as the clerk for the WRTA board. I told them I was willing to do so, and that was voted and passed on June 20th. So while we play a small role in WRTA with our senior transit and transportation, it at least keeps our voice there and active. Opioid, this month, our task force met with the principal of Tantasca and the school nurse to work on partnering with some opioid-related education and prevention. I see Annie's here tonight. I want to thank Annie and Becky from our library, as well as Lucy from the Police Department, who lead a lot of our programming for the opioid programs. And we're moving forward. But this was an interesting meeting, just to hear what Oxbridge is doing in some surrounding communities. On the next part, I was invited to Oxbridge to go to that, too. So we are active and moving, and we are, we're seeing some concrete things, but real excited to be working with Tantasca, which surprisingly had not, and I understand it's because their curriculum is just so thick with things they have to do. They had not really focused on opioid. We were surprised. So we not really approached the schools initially, thinking that, well, they're doing their own drug thing, but there's a need identified, and they're willing to work with us and bring in speakers and put it as part of a curriculum, maybe have us have some presence at football games, where parents who might be interested can sort of casually subtly get information. So we're working on volunteer groups to staff that and things like that. So we're pretty excited about this fall, having more of a presence throughout the school community as well.
Okay. Robin, when you get a chance, could we get a list of who is on the task force?
It's an internal staff committee meeting, but I, it's the, yeah, Fire Chief, Police Chief, myself, Lucy, Becky. We have Ray Hall, who comes in. He works in the industry of recovery and rehabilitation, myself and Annie. So it's staff, it's a staff group, but I will. And at some point, we probably would be looking to expand that as we look to have volunteer groups and make it a public...
People say, what is this task force?
Yeah, it's really an internal group. It's a staff group right now. At some point, obviously, it'll, it'll grow to become a public group with public meetings and all that stuff. Trails Grant, on June 21, I had the honor of representing Sturbridge and Holliston, where we were awarded $400,000 grant by Mass Works. I want to thank the Trails Committee, Jean Boobon, Tom Chamberlain, Brandon, and Fred's do just tremendous work. I will ask that they have, overall, 65 communities shared a total of $12 million in grants. I would ask the board tonight to consider allowing, authorizing me to sign those grant documents with the state. I don't know if you need to vote on that, or it's just, I typically do sign those, but you should vote on that.
Well, we may as well just cover it. Okay, I make a motion, then, that we allow the town administrator to sign the grant award.
I'll second that.
Almost in favor.
You'll let me take $400,000. We love that. And then finally, on June 27, I went to the STAM meeting, Small Town Administrators Meeting. I did sit this year on the bylaw committee, subcommittee for them. They're a great resource. This year, they brought in some people from the state to talk about your, you know, your fiscal practices and reading your audits and looking at some internal checks and balances, just as, you know, we have cash coming in and things like that. So Barbara's really good, and on top of that, and there's a couple ways we might be able to make it a little easier. Some interesting ideas came out of that. So that is my update in a nutshell.
Great. Any questions for Robin? All right. I think at this point, we, we're past 6:35, so we probably, was it?
Can we just do a quick public service?
Oh, I'm sorry. I took it out over. I got thrown by my gavel joke.
It's exciting.
Mary Lou, you're up first.
I just want to wish everybody a happy Fourth, and for our public safety personnel just to stay safe.
In the Senior Veterans Tax Work Program began today. For details, call the Senior Center, 508-347-7575. And Tuesday, July 9, from 2 to 6, National Grid will be hosting a community event open at the Senior Center. This is open to all residents interested in learning and how to save money on their energy bills. There will be a representative from SNAP and Worcester Community Council to provide resources as well. No appointment needed. Thank you.
Thanks. No happy Fourth? I will wish everybody a happy, healthy, safe Fourth as well, and God's blessings.
Okay, likewise, happy and safe.
Yeah. And on the note, we did move past the moment of silence, but I guess I'll just use my public service announcement to get to, to address that. You know, as we go through this week and any holiday, we have to just thank those who served, be in the armed forces, be it police, fire, EMS, or anybody's contributing, like all of you are tonight, to our community. We appreciate you all. And everybody just stay safe and have some fun. So with that, I'm going to call the public hearing for National Grid. And so I think, Mary?
National Grid has made a petition to the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen to install four JO polls on Podunk Grove, beginning at a point approximately 1,500 feet northeast of the center line of the intersection of Podunk Road and Highway 49, and continuing approximately 5,100 feet in a north direction. Installation of new polls, 22-50, 40-25, 44, and 44-50. National Grid also requests permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways. The poll hearing will take place on Monday, July 1, 2024, 6:35 p.m., Sturbridge Town Hall, second floor, Veterans Memorial Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge.
Thank you. Come on in. After. Are you, are you a resident, I'm assuming? Yeah. So just, so what's going on? Just explain to the group.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. My name is, I'm an engineer for National Grid. So we're just doing some work on this road. The current spans between the poles are a little bit too long. Some of them as high as 230 feet, and our max limit is typically 150 feet. And that's because the further the poles are apart, it's a lot less stable, and the wires are going to pull the poles more and more, and it's really heavy weight on the cables. So therefore, we wanted to do some upgrades on this road, just putting in new poles, so that the spans are a little shorter, so that they're easier to deal with when storms come.
Okay. And so does this, how does, if at all, does this relate to the other work you guys are doing on Podunk Road?
So for this one, it's, it's slightly related. Every time we go through a large job or a large project, typically, we like to clean things up as we go along. So a lot of these poles, the spans were just too long, so we figured we'd replace it now that we're doing all the work.
And we, and perhaps you said this already, and I'm, and I'm just being a little dim, but the, they're too long. So how far away are they supposed to be?
Maximum 150 feet typically.
And when are they right now, again?
This one is reading 230 feet. The others, just 200 feet, over 200 feet as well. So it's pretty well above our limit.
Yeah, okay.
If I could add, we will be going out tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock with Lauren to the major project. So any residents who are interested, we're meeting at 9 o'clock tomorrow morning, approximately at 248, street number 248 to start. Tree Warden will be out there, as well as Lauren and myself. Lauren came on board after our last site visit out there. So just an announcement to the public to be aware of that. I have emailed some of the people who I've been in email contact with before, and I just put a post on Facebook as well.
248 Podunk Road at 9:00.
Around 248 area. We're meeting at 9:00. Yes.
I just have a, oh, I just had a question, because, you know, a lot of the neighbors now, they're concerned with the amount of new poles, the higher charge, trees have come down, you know, it's not that country road that they moved into, if you will. So I have to ask this. We're having four more poles, and they're too far apart. Were the regulations different before, like what made them 230 feet and 200 feet apart?
Sure. Well, before, obviously, before National Grid, it was owned by a very many different companies here and there, so standards do change. And as we use new technology, now we have pole loading software, where it can literally analyze how much loading, how much distance we need to make it safe. So as we have better technology, I feel like we are a little bit more restrictive on the standards. But at the same time, a lot of people are upgrading their services just due to new appliances, like EV chargers and solar. And eventually, the grid would have to be upgraded anyways. So this is just kind of the first step that we're, we're taking. On top of that, just for this road in particular, upgrading the poles also means upgrading the, the size and just replacing the old wood. So during snowstorms, it's actually going to be a lot safer. So hopefully, it'd be a lot less outages.
Yep. So are these internal guidelines that require 150 feet, or is this a state guideline? Because you said ours are stricter than others. So National Grid didn't install those initial poles?
I would have to double-check if we installed those, but the standards beforehand weren't as strict as, as it is nowadays. And as the poles get taller, and the more equipment that's added, typically, we have to decrease the spans, just to account for heavier wire, heavier equipment.
Oh, I get it. But is that an internal guideline, or is that a state law?
Yes, so we have internal standards, yes.
And what is the state law on how far apart the poles have to be, or are, are the maximum distance between poles? Do you know?
I'm not sure if this state requires a maximum distance between poles. I just know for us, National Grid, we have 150 feet typically.
Any other questions?
No.
Anything else from the board?
No.
All right, from the public, you just want to come up to one of the mics and identify yourself and your address.
My name is Robert Kane. I live on 151 Podunk Road. I've been there about nine years. And from what I see, they're going to be installing a pole right in front of my house. And from what I've gathered, I don't do much in the town. I just live here. They want to take...
That's plenty. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Kids go to school here. You know, I just live here. I don't, I don't really get involved, but when it becomes, you know, something I pay for, I want to be involved. So one of these poles is going right in front of my house, and I have an oak tree that they had marked, that they want to take down the whole oak tree.
So what was your address again?
151 Podunk Road.
Okay.
Are you available tomorrow morning at 9:00?
Excuse me?
Are you available tomorrow morning at 9:00?
No, I work.
Okay, let me take, I'll take, we'll take a name.
But okay, so where were you, you're continuing?
So my, my only concern is the tree that I have in front of my house. I mean, they, they want to go higher with the poles. They want to add four more poles on Podunk Road. I don't care what you do. That's fine. But that oak tree, if they're going to take that oak tree down, you know, first of all, I don't want the oak tree taken down, because it's beautiful, beautiful privacy, and during the summer, it shades my whole house half of the, half of the time. So I don't want the oak tree taken down. And if it has to be taken down, I want say in it. I want say in the wood. I want say on how much they're going to cut it, if they're going to cut all of it, if they're going to cut half of it, if they're going to get rid of it, what are they going to do with it? I want say in all of that. It's my tree. I like the tree, and I don't want it taken down. It's been tagged that they want to take the whole thing down. And they're only going to take so much, from what I heard. So I want clarification on what they're taking down, why, when, and do I have any say in that?
That's fair. So the, how many...
So the poles are going higher up, correct?
Well, that's a question. So, so the poles are going higher up. With these particular installations, how many trees are we losing? Do you know?
No, I don't, I don't have that information apparently.
That will be in front of the planning board, so there will be a hearing on every tree involved with the whole Podunk project. And each, the tree warden is actually going to go out and categorize and list and document every tree that has a tag on it, make a recommendation. Some of the trees that have tags are dying anyway. Likely, they'll get removed. Other trees, we've already talked about...
Just me, me and me, I already ripped the tag down.
Yeah, well, that's, that's okay.
I don't want the tree taken down.
That's understandable, but please don't do that, because then we might not be able to figure out what's going on.
And then we don't want to happen. We might not, and it won't end up classified on the list. So we want to make sure that it's known that it's on the radar. We don't want to lose sight of it from the side of even protecting the tree. So...
This pole is going right in front of my house.
So, and that, even, even that, though, with the meeting that we had onsite, there was discussion even on the fact that some of those sometimes can be moved a few feet one way or another. You know, if it's 100, you might move it in a little bit, so it's not blocking your view out of your living room. But we'll take your name and number and reach out to you.
Yeah, because, I mean, I would feel exactly the rate, the way this resident feels right here.
This tree is beautiful.
I understand.
I took pictures of it. I trimmed it since I got there. I mean, it's all privacy up top.
I get it.
I got two trees on the right-hand side of me that have the same crotch in it that are dead. There's no leaves on them. Don't worry about those, though.
So we, we hear you. We understand your point, but this is a point of public hearing. This isn't a call and response. I don't mean to be rude either, else these things get a little untenable. So Mary, what were you saying?
Well, I, no, I just, I would feel, as a resident, I would feel exactly the way this gentleman does. And that's why I was kind of inquiring, like, to what extent, so the poles are too far away. We need them closed. So I didn't get a direct answer on, I guess you didn't know if this is a state requirement that they be closer, or is this just National Grid wanting them closer? Because, I mean, my favorite pastime is running, and there's no way that all the, all the poles right now are 150 feet apart. There's just no way, especially on the more rural roads like Podunk. I get that it's going to probably in the end benefit. But, you know, with all due respect, when a company goes before and says, we're going to take this down, this down, they're probably doing what's most efficient for them and not really taking into account enough a resident's feeling about something like that. So, I mean, I would like to state my support. I know it's going to go before the planning board. I agree with our chair, though, but by leaving it marked is a way that it's going to be part of the planning board discussion on whether or not that tree coming down is warranted. If you don't mark it at all, I don't want to be in a position where National Grid just goes and takes it without the proper process. But I, I feel that National Grid should work with this gentleman in terms of not requiring that tree to come down.
We will, and it's, and it really is going to be under the recommendation primarily of Tony Crane, who has, is actually the tree warden, who's actually recommending on many of these trees that they not come down. And we're working around that. Grid is working with us around that. Some of the trees, it's take off just one lead instead of the whole tree. Is the tree, just curious, is the tree in the public right of way, or is it actually on your property? Because some of these are actually on private property, too.
So the stone rock wall is, it's on my side.
It's on your side of, okay. Okay, so that even more, yeah.
And the other thing, and I talked to Robin about this before, hold on, just one more thing. These meetings are helpful, but 9:00 in the morning, it's just, it's just not conducive for most residents to be able to attend. I mean, it's fine for our staff, but it requires somebody to take a day off or a half a day from work to be at a 9:00 a.m. meeting. I don't understand why they're not on a Saturday morning or 6:00 at night.
And I will meet with individuals separately around hours. So when, if staff, I don't know when this particular one got coordinated. Lauren is new, and I think she's just trying to ramp up on the project. But I will meet with people in and around after hours as well.
Well, and I do also have some concerns myself, because, and I think that we, on the previous conversation, had, and this isn't your fault, but the, I feel like sometimes we have these hearings, and then we ask a series of questions, and then it's a lot of, yeah, well, I don't know. And I know, we do have a scenic road bylaw, so I guess we have some authority over trees. But beyond even that, it's just like, this is pretty basic stuff, like how many trees are you taking down? Where are they? And, you know, and we've gotten pushback from the residents, and, you know, we don't, it's hard for us to know what's right or wrong when you're putting together in a moment. Yeah. But the, so I guess what my inclination would be is, especially if we're going on to someone's, you know, not, we're off the right of way, and if you were to receive this public hearing, unless you, you know, you had a marked tree on your property, you wouldn't necessarily know what was going to be occurring. So I think we need a little bit to work with you guys to get a so little, like, even if it's just basic details, like how many trees? What are we doing? Or just, because it just, because we ask the same questions every time. And, and we, and I get you're working for a big company, and that you're getting shipped out to how many of these meetings. So I'm not, I'm not killing the messenger by any stretch. But I think we need to build out the information here a bit more.
I will gather a list for you, too, as well. Right now, conservation, tree warden, and planning, have, everybody's got bits of information.
Yeah.
I'll consolidate what we all have and get it to all of you.
Because it's not, it don't, because it's, you know, and it's not, because a lot of this is just about tailoring and making sure the load's at the right places. But with that, but I think you had, want to say something? Just up the microphone.
Absolutely. Seth Manser, 148 Cedar Street. Somewhat related, is curious, so I've reached out to a number of town staff about what is the, is there a franchise agreement between the town and National Grid? And I got pointed to a number of different departments. Nobody really kind of knew what I was talking about. So, and when I went on the Department of Energy website, there is a master spreadsheet. Sturbridge Mass is listed as not having one. There are a handful of towns in Massachusetts. For context, a franchise agreement, so National Grid is a, referred to as a natural monopoly, right? So we only have one distribution company for electricity. And given that, you know, we've, the monopoly was granted, it's not, as I understand, an indefinite forever, in perpetuity monopoly to be allowed. So there's a number of towns across the country that have, they have 10, 15, or 20, sometimes even 25-year franchise agreements with the utility that's serviced. So a number of cities have used that as a point of leverage to say, hey, if you are going to continue having the monopoly contract for the town of Sturbridge, respectfully, you need to play by, in playball. You need to show up, and again, you're the messenger, sir, not, is, you know, there's a lot of decisions that can feel like, you know, it's out of our control. And something that is particularly private property, don't want to rehash what the last resident shared. But, you know, just sharing, you're hearing your, Mr. Goodwin, what you just shared really kind of got me fired up about, you know, thinking how we can, as a town, identify is, has there been a franchise agreement signed? If not, I understand there is a process for that to happen.
Sure.
And that has resulted in some towns going, going as far as wanting to defect and become a Princeton, Sterling, Boylston, Shrewsbury, fill in the blank.
Yeah.
Or stick with a franchise agreement, but then use that as leverage when the renewal period comes up. Hey, we need this, this kind of notice. We want, you know, better service reliability. National Grid is now owned by United Kingdom Company. If we're out another two hours, respectfully, they don't really care if it was a Department of Public Works representative in town, and they said, oh, yeah, we're just not going to care. I think the, I think the Board of Selectmen might hear some, some anger residents, just like for the, on the water side, right? If someone's unhappy with water sewer service, you know, things are responsible to at a local level. So it is, franchise agreement, curious where, where it is, and if that's something that is, the town is open to, interested in pursuing. I'd love to put my name on the list of interested residents.
That's an interesting point, and Robin, please follow up with it with counsel. But beyond even that, I don't think power is necessarily one of our issues with a lot of these, at least in terms of gathering the information. A lot of it is the right hand and left hand, knowing what's going on. And that's not even at the municipal level necessarily, because it sounds like you're familiar with National Grid, but you're also dealing with the DP, the DPU and a variety of other regulators, and where the information gets, and then getting it in a, a fashion that is timely is often frustrating from the, our external partners, unless so really the people in town. So I think with that, I, I'm frankly not very comfortable voting on this right now.
No, we can continue.
Oh, we have another one? Yeah. Guys, you can also slide back unless you, thanks.
Mark Fancy 20, Podunk Road. I welcome the improvements National Grid's making. I don't have any problem with the new poles. This gets back to the trees. As far as I know, this has been going on for a couple of years, this project, in terms of planning, from the number of times I've had foresters from National Grid come by the house to ask me questions. Things have been tagged, untagged, tagged, untagged, multiple times. The other problem is with certain species of trees dying faster than anybody's suspected. My concern is what was tagged or is tagged needs to be updated.
Yes. And it is, and some of the untagging you may see is, we had a meeting out there where there was actually discussion, okay, no, we're not going to take this tree. Boom, tree comes off the list. But there is still a list, a master list of a couple hundred trees that Tony is putting together and working with Gene on categorizing now to prepare, as we move forward, for each of these trees individually to be reviewed.
Yeah, I was wondering.
And if it's one that's dying anyway, and we can remove that one instead of another one, Tony's going to have the input on that. So our tree warden is very, very hands-on, and anything that falls into conservation's purview as of tomorrow, she's really ramping up on that as well.
So my, my question to the board here is, can we somehow, the residents on the street, get a list of the trees that are coming down?
You will, you will. It will be public, it will be public when those trees go to a public hearing for, for planning. There will be a list. I will do my best when I get that list to identify who's with each tree and see if we can somehow do a notification process specifically, so you can all be at the meeting if a tree involves you. In the short term, we have, are having the onsite meetings, and if by chance people are there and they can have a conversation with Grid, if not, we can meet after, or whatever hours we have to meet, to where if you want to put a certain tree on my radar more than others, we can do that.
So the two in front of my house.
Well, I have a question for you. Just on a point of data, how many more JO poll hearings in this area do you expect to have within the period of this project? Because I think this is third or fourth by my count.
I think beforehand, some of them might have been connected, and we just kind of split them up for convenience sake. But for now, my, me personally, my queue is empty for the town of Sturbridge in terms of petitions. So currently, we don't have any coming up, to my knowledge.
Okay. And so is there, is that, is there a possibility that that data is, you know, like that, that internal conversation hasn't had, and that we're in another X relatively short period of time, we're going to have another one of these hearings?
Oh, I'd say the soonest couple of months, yes, potentially, but nothing that I know of currently.
And is there a particular reason that you need to vote on this tonight?
Uh, no, not to my knowledge.
Okay. Because I, I don't want to do this by drips and drabs anymore, because this is what's happening, is that we come up here, we have this conversation, we think we know what we're talking about, and then handing it off to planning and conservation, which, you know, that's kind of the role within reason. And then, and then we're kind of back here doing the same thing, and it's, it's not really fair to them or the community to not know where we're at. So, and I, and I'm not, because I know all these companies So, and I, and I'm not, because I know how these companies work. But the, anything else?
Yeah, I want to add to that. That's kind of a follow-up that I was going to do in terms of how many more poles are not within that 150 feet. That is the internal guideline to National Grid, but that's what our chair does ask. You, your agenda seems clear right now for the next two months. But let me ask you this. And maybe a franchise agreement would achieve something like this. Why is it not, it's not always you that comes before us?
No.
So I don't understand why there's no continuity in terms of the representative that comes before National Grid, because then there's no follow-up. Like, he's having the conversation with us, he's met these residents, we've expressed our concern with respect to certain trees coming down. He's aware of it, he's aware of the questions. And then in three months, I also want to put a request into National Grid that they say, they send the same representative every time. I mean, it seems that they've got to have their engineers organized by geographic area. Like, I'm assuming he's got central Ma, well, I don't know, Worcester County or not central Mass., but, you know, southward Sturbridge, Charlton, I mean, I don't know, but you must, are you assigned to territory?
Yes, we are.
Okay, so you're assigned the Sturbridge territory.
I do have a liaison.
Pardon?
I do have a National Grid liaison.
Yes, but that liaison's not always the person that comes in the hearing. And I, I think it should be that, the same person that comes, so that we can say, remember at our meeting two months ago, you said this. And then we get a new one, and then it's like starting from scratch again. And there's just no continuity for us or the residents. And really, quite frankly, for the representative that has to sit there. Because now you know, we're going to ask questions like, how many trees were tagged? How many more, you know, we're going to ask the same questions and then you would be aware of the questions that we're going to ask and you would come equipped with the answers.
Right.
So, I mean, I'd like to put a request in to National Grid that they continue to send you, for example.
Sure, so I'll definitely. So I'll definitely make that note to my supervisor and everything. But just to be like super transparent for us, since this is obviously a little bit outside of our work hours, so it's almost as like a volunteer basis, as like an overtime sort of thing. So that's on top of, on top of just people just shifting departments and all of that. So that's kind of why, so I'm trying to take all of these just because, for those exact reasons. But that's kind of the reason. But I'll definitely bring it up and hopefully can get you guys in.
When fees will put in.
Yeah, right, right. Now, you have to cancel your vacations at Christmas.
We're happy to keep running your overtime.
Yeah, that's true. So I don't know, what does the rest of the board feel like?
I want to get both names of these two gentlemen as well, so.
In terms of process, I have a question. I know you said you make public when the hearing is going to go. If a tree is in front of a resident's house, are they going to get a personal email? Or do they just have to be aware of the public notice? Because, yeah, I think the people, at least who make an effort to come before us, should get like an email saying.
Oh, absolutely. Anybody who's come before us, I've gotten a name and an email from. I, if, if feasible, I'm going to try to go through that list of like a couple hundred trees. Some of them aren't in front of anybody's house, so it's less of an issue. But the ones that are in front of homes, I will try to get contact for each of those residents where I can and say to the people, if, and they may be situations where it's so obvious the tree is dead. It's dead, it's going to come down either way, for our own public safety. But if not, you know, I can try to reach out to someone and say, your tree's on the list and it's going to be here at a planning on such and such a night. You care about your tree. Go look at it. But, you know, and it may be that Tony may have a recommendation on that tree. I don't want this tree cut down.
Okay, so, but again, I think Mary Chase, Mary Lou, do you guys have?
Oh, yeah. Well, no, just that we need to get all the information together before.
And that's kind of what, what tomorrow's part of for Lauren to really get ramped up as well. We need the conservation component in it now, too.
Yeah, we're only the first step.
Yeah, but I do think that if we get all the information gathered at the initial stage, then everybody's reading from the same hymn book a little bit. So I don't think we're going to have a motion on this one tonight. Is that fair?
To continue the public.
To continue, yeah. All right, do we have a motion to continue?
Okay, I'll make a motion, we continue the public hearing to. Michelle, how's the schedule look?
Fifteenth and then August. Fifteenth and then August 5th or August 19th?
I'd say don't let 19th, just because.
I'm on vacation the 5th, but you can, you know.
Well, I think a lot of people are on vacation.
It's probably wise to put it to the 19th, because that gives me a better sense of when these things are going to planning, when they're moving forward.
That makes sense.
It's not going to be tomorrow. These trees are coming down tomorrow, so.
And how many trees, if it's not you, sir, how many tree, you know, somebody have the information on the 19th as to how many trees are.
I think we actually have them.
No, but these are new. No, no, but this is for, these are four additional poles that he wants to install, which are taking down different trees, from what I understand.
But regardless, it's, let's get organized about what's occurring. And, and I think we probably can just get a little bit more data gathering on the front end from everybody to, and sort of every time we look at them, we know this is X, Y, Z, boom, 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 boom. Because even the maps are a little, I mean, I, yeah, I don't think I could get anywhere if I rely on this. Let's put it.
I didn't need it, that's why I came.
Yeah, so it's.
So I'll continue the motion?
Yeah, so, so motion to continue until we said then.
August 19th.
And at that point, you can continue it again if you have to, if we're not happy with.
6:35.
Okay.
And I will be in touch with both of you. Michelle will get your numbers and email.
All right. All right, and, oh, I got to vote it one by one? Oh, no, I don't. That's the wrong one. All right, all those in favor? Yeah, I have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I do.
Okay. Where did I put everything at? All right, moving on.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
We went through the town administrator update, on to action items. Consideration and possible action to confirm the appointment of Seth Manzer to the Agricultural Commission for a term to expire June 26, 2026. Come on down, Seth. Again, for the record, just state your name and address.
Yep, Seth Manzer, 148 Cedar Street.
All right, Seth, why do you want to be on the Agricultural Commission?
I love food. I love food. So I grew up on a 125-year-old Baldwin apple orchard in Western Mass. My dad, growing up, made a little poster on the wall, Farmer John. Got the property. We were growing, you know, a little market garden, over time, some poultry. Never really got off the ground, so to speak. He's always dreamed about it. Yeah, he's retired, always doing a little more. I've been dovetailing in and out of hobby gardener, small market gardener, pastured poultry. And I can't tell you how many times I've come into some type of a hurdle. Most recently, pastured poultry, you know, growing chickens. There's no USDA facilities in Massachusetts. There's only three that farmers can take birds to in the entire state. There are a number of seasonal slaughterhouses for poultry, chickens, ducks, turkeys. But you, they can only slaughter their own birds. I can't bring my birds. So my friend Eric Reynolds, who you guys have seen before for the, also interested in ag commission, he and I have a little chicken operation across town, right behind Old Sturridge Village. It is a place he bought from his grandparents. And so we're going to go with some microgreens and some pastured poultry. And it's $8 a chicken to slaughter at Stillman's to pass all the official checks in. And so, you know, I'm definitely here to play by every legal Department of Public Health rule.
Sure.
And that also means I'm selling $25, $35 chickens.
Yeah.
You know, to the right crowd, we're getting some, some interest. That is why I'm interested in being here, is people like my father, who have an interest in agriculture and is just, it, there's just so many, so many rules, so many challenges. We're farming in rocks, right here in Sturbridge. The glaciers didn't do us a favor. And so we have, we have rough land to start with. And we have a, we have an incredibly complex regulatory environment that farmers need to operate within. And so as I'm trying to get things off the ground here, I can't tell you how confusing it is even consider having onsite slaughter for chickens. Or all these various things that I, to my knowledge, is really no producers at the farmer's market in Sturbridge, from Sturbridge. Craft, ask people.
Sure.
But, you know, people come from Templeton, Brimfield. We do have amazing soil. I've been living here for five years and I've built up the soil nicely. It's, it's possible, dot, dot, dot. We got to connect economic viability. So in, in, real quick, in just seeing some video recordings of ag commissions for other towns, seeing some of the things they do in annual farm day, you know, just kind of get, raising awareness, having an annual tour, maybe a quarterly or once annual, you know, meet and greet networking for ag producers in the town. These are some really nice ideas that I've seen the other towns doing. And, you know, the number of dairies, the number of farms, the number of family farms, no matter what APR 61A lovely concepts, lovely tax structures, and are doing important work, dot, dot, dot. I can't tell you how many parcels of APR land are growing goldenrod. Now, I have bees, so I, my bees like the goldenrod, but they should be growing and be agriculturally active. And so it's not just enough to have an APR 61A and other programs like that, but it's about having, you know, an active commission. So five years ago, right when I was just moving in town, I, actually, no, it was 2020. I got in touch with the ag commission, well, Conservation Commission, because I was curious about chicken ordinance, which has now been updated. I feel like I, my, my little part of being an active resident, you know, felt, okay, cool, this thing does work. And so now, it used to be that you couldn't have chickens under five acres. Now, between 1.05 acres, which is what I have, and I think it's two acres, I can have a range of chickens. That's great, that's great. What about pigs? What about other animals or in different categories? I have dogs across the street that have larger piles of excrement than my chickens. And they're louder than chickens, but they're loud. So having that, you know, we're a right-to-farm town, only because the state mandates over five, you got over five acres, you got a right to farm. I don't have five acres, but having a micro rabbit meat business or having a cut flower business, lots of different agricultural endeavors, you know, don't involve onsite slaughter of animals and stinky things. And so having an active agricultural, and so it was my understanding at the time, ag commission just wasn't active or meeting. And so when Eric told me, it's kind of, there's some interest or opportunity to kickstart, I'm not sure exactly where the status is. Actually, that is a question I have, is where's the current status of the ag commission?
Well, we have four filled position and one vacancy that you're planning for, right?
It's been completely inactive since I came in May of '22. So we've been trying to resurrect it. Yeah, I've been trying to resurrect it for two years and I think we finally, all of a sudden, have people who want to do it.
All of a sudden, this is great.
Yeah, so it's come in and out. But with that, do we have any questions from the board?
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
Okay, I make a motion to confirm the appointment of Seth Manzer to the Agriculture, Agricultural Commission for a term to expire June 26, 2026.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor? Thanks, Seth.
Good luck.
Energy, so, good.
We'll sappy of it.
Take it away.
All right, with that, we have action item B, which is consideration and possible action on the appointment of Florencia Sagrano to the Conservation Commission effective July 1, 2024, with a term to expire July 1, 2027. And this is taking Ted's.
Yeah, she was an alternate and we are moving her into a, hoping to move her into a full position.
Okay, did we appoint her to something else, too?
She is on open space as well.
Oh, okay.
I think she's still on open space. I'm not sure she gave that position up. But she's, she's a wildlife biologist, brilliant woman.
Yeah, no, I mean, the resume.
Yeah, she's just like.
I remember.
I put her on open space because she has such a broad perspective of all things outdoors and wild and conservation.
So any other comments, questions, thoughts from the board?
Very impressive resume.
Yeah, she's just, yeah, she's pretty impressive to me, too.
All right, so with that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Florencia Sagrano to the Conservation Commission effective July 1, 2024, with a term to expire July 1, 2027.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great, thank you. All right, moving on to action item C, consideration and possible action to confirm the reappointment of Edward Goodwin to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June 17, 2027.
Yeah, I didn't think he needed to come in to meet everybody.
I kind of support this one. He does. I think his resume would be equally as.
Something tells me, something tells me this appointment hasn't read as many books as the previous.
You're the only one that can say it. But I will make a motion to.
Reappoint?
Reappoint, confirm the reappointment of Ed Goodwin to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June 17, 2027.
Second.
All those in favor? You guys have it. All right. Moving on to these troublemakers in the back there. Consideration and possible action to approve ARPA funding for a Gaga Ball pit that I believe you guys are going to explain to me.
So these lovely ladies came to us in ARPA to present a request for ARPA funding, which the ARPA committee voted to move forward to the board.
All right, so are you three young ladies all staying out of trouble this summer?
One on the end is not.
Well, she did say young.
Andy, so we want to start?
Do you have, what's your opening? Okay, you write into names? Awesome. I'll let them, kind of, we have an opening statement prepared.
All right, hit, hit us with it.
Hi, we are cadet girl scout troops, girl scouts from troop 64868. I am Emily.
And I'm Lily. We're both going into seventh grade and we're working on the highest award a girl scout cadet can earn. The silver award along with our friend Alexa, who's able, who was unable to join us here.
We have been working on the silver award for many months. We have approval from the Sturbridge recreational department in ARPA and are here presenting to you tonight. For our silver award, we have helped design and plan space for a Gaga Ball pit at the rec across the street from the beach.
Gaga Ball is a traditional girl scout game played with a bouncy kickball. Many players compete against each other in the Gaga pit to be the winner.
We have researched many different materials and found the perfect Gaga pit for our town. It is from a company called Coach Cliffs and is made out of composite boards, metal side brackets, and a top cover which will help prevent slivers and injuries. These materials also make the Gaga pit last longer.
The base is recommended to be stoned dust. We would also like a sign with the girl scout law and promise and a sign showing this is a silver award project completed by the three of us. Coach Cliffs will include five Gaga balls and a metal rule signed with our order if approved.
We think this project is perfect for our town. It gives the people in our community a fun, new activity to try. We are excited to work with you and the town of Sturbridge to complete this Gaga girls project.
Great, all right.
Very good.
Excellent job.
I know, I'm glad, oh.
Go, go, go.
I'm glad you came in because I had no clue what a Gaga Ball was.
That makes two of us.
I've known about it for years.
Some of us are more honest.
Anyways, questions, any questions, comments from the board for?
No, you girls work, Todd.
Looks like it's a great idea.
Special events. ARPA was unanimous in its support. The girls did a good job. We also had hoped, and they were eager, because I know you planned on the design and who's going to install, but our town administrator indicated that, you know, perhaps we can keep the cost down a little bit by the DPW doing some of the work. And we had suggested that as part of earning the silver award, that the girl scouts also have an opportunity to do something safe, but to work with the town and the DPW as kind of like a hands-on, so you can, you know, take kudos for like actually doing whatever assembly they can do. And, you know, I think the girls thought that was, you were there, right? You thought that was a good idea, Lily? Yeah.
So we'll hook them up with Heather and find work that they can do during the construction project safely.
We have work assigned. So the northern pavilion up there, the girls really want to be involved, but we have some concerns with the liability with while the construction company is there to assemble it.
Right.
So the girls will be reaching out to DPW with the request. It will come from the troops directly to spread the stoned dust. So we still have another level of department head to contact and communication there. If DPW is able to do that, it will save us $355 so far. In addition to that, so the northern pavilion has some graffiti, hasn't been touched up in a while, but it's actually still in pretty good shape. So what we're going to do is while the construction or the assembly is going on, we are going to be painting it. I'm going to help the girls. We're going to figure out a date to do it that hopefully matches up with them, so we can be onsite to manage the assembly. But it will be, hopefully, all three of your team is here with myself. Maybe we'll have some others that are also part of our summer rec program. So maybe we'll have some more hands involved, but we will be painting the northern pavilion.
Great.
Will you be painting a sign with the rules?
So there's two different signs, one for specifically the rules and then one that will mention the girls, the project, the troops, and that's all included in our. and that's all included in our quotes.
And just to add one more thought in terms of history, I spoke with the town clerk, and she indicated that when she was the recreation director, she had an interest, the rep department had an interest in, or she did, that she was going to present to you guys for Gaga. I feel funny saying Gaga, I was like the Lady Gaga. Gaga Ball, and she had presented it to the Betterment Committee, and there just wasn't funding. So there's been an interest in having this, apparently, according to Lynn Gerard, for a number of years. So it's a good thing that we have the extra ARPA funds to do something like this for the town, community.
It was the first item on my to-do list, and the year I was coordinator, still working with Lynn, and I came into a note on a sheet about Gaga Pit. I'm looking at it, I'm like, what is she saying to me? So that, I mean, that was already seven years ago, and that was her goal at the time. So Gaga has been around for a really long time. It's very popular between the scouts, the boy scouts, different camps. I'm very excited to have this to offer.
It's great.
It's good.
Any other, anything else?
Nope.
Good job, ladies.
All right, you did a great job. I do have one condition before we take it up. You're going to have, the first game, you have to make sure Annie plays in it, okay? With that, do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve ARPA funding for the Gaga Ball Pit.
We could have a staff.
Second up.
All right, we have a second. All those in favor?
Team bonding.
We have it. Great.
We get COB against town hall.
Yeah. I think that's, I didn't go keep moving here. So with that, the, thank you, girls, you did a phenomenal job.
Thank you for your hard work.
We really impressed.
Great work.
Thank you for your enthusiasm and your work.
Good job presenting, ladies and gentlemen.
All right, we're moving on to action item E. Consideration and possible action on a transient vendor application for northeast cutlery collectors from September 15, 2024, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Servitose Hotel. Is anybody here for it? I don't think so.
No, we do.
All right, do we have any questions or concerns?
No.
If not, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Fewer words are better.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? The eyes have it. All right, moving on to action item F. Consideration and possible action on a one-day liquor license application for Hamilton Rod and Gun Club on August 2, 2024, from 2:00 PM to 1:00 AM, and August 3, 2024, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, for a car show at 24 Hamilton Road, Sturbridge.
Okay, before we vote, and I've had to do it in the past, just to disclose that my son is on the board of directors of the club.
Well, that's a no for us, then.
And I have to disclose that I am a member.
I, okay, that's a yes, then, no, even no.
Yeah, no monetary.
Nope.
No, no monetary interest.
This is an annual event. They come by for us, and it's never been a problem.
Yeah, and it's a big deal. A lot of people, a lot of people go to that.
All right, well, with that, do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we grant a one-day liquor license for Hamilton Rod and Gun Club on August 2, 2024, from 2:00 PM to 1:00 AM, and August 3, 2024, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM for a car show at 24 Hamilton Road, Sturbridge.
Oh, sorry, Mary.
That's okay.
Second.
Right, all those in favor? Great. Okay, moving on. Consideration and possible action to confirm the appointment of Dale Gonya to the Sturbridge Tourism Association for a term to expire June 30, 2027. All right.
This was introduced to Terry to replace, I believe it's the hotel position. I don't believe Dale is a resident, but I don't think they have to be a resident to represent an industry, as long as the industry is in town. So I supported this recommendation.
Okay, questions, thoughts, concerns?
No.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment of Dale Gonya to the Sturbridge Tourism Association for a term to expire June 30, 2027.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The eyes have it. Okay, consideration and possible action to confirm the reappointment of Jasmine Bell to the Sturbridge Tourist Association for a term to expire June 30, 2027. Do we have any thoughts, questions, concerns?
No.
No.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the reappointment of Jasmine Bell to the Sturbridge Tourist Association for a term to expire June 30, 2027.
Do we have a second?
I'll make a second.
All right, all those in favor? Excellent. All right, moving on to the consideration and possible action on naming of the water tower, currently listed as Saint Anne's Water Tower. So there's been a fair amount of discussion on this issue. I think there were some emails, I'm not sure who were on them.
We, I didn't mean to.
I don't know about it.
We discussed this at the meeting before the town meeting.
Correct, yeah.
And we were in, four people agreed.
Sure.
To Church Street. We just didn't take a formal vote.
Yeah, and there's some other conversations, and I know Mary wants to speak about, just, I'm just catching people up, for regarding the condition of the access road that's up to the water tower and the, and the contracting relationship more broadly, I think it's with T-Mobile. I want to say Sprint, but I might, I might be flipping. But the, and so with that, Mary, I think you, you.
Okay, so it was for, at the, I have since met with both Father Luke as well as his volunteer advisor, I think, Peter is how you all call yourself, yes. And they don't have a problem with Church Street, so I don't have a problem with Church Street. And I think that's kind of a non-issue at this point. That's just the tip of the iceberg, and I don't know, you know, if we want to get into, I was going to do it under old business because we already approved this going out to bid, or I could do it now. Yeah, but it has not, it is not. I know it has not, but I have sent a series of emails, you know, in honor of open meeting law. Didn't send it to everybody because I didn't want to promote deliberation. But I did send it to our chair and as well as our town administrator, a lot of concerns that I have. I did go and tour the property in question, and at a minimum, their request was that this doesn't get sent out to bid, despite us back in December, I think, saying that it could, until a lot of issues are settled surrounding that access road and the agreement that they have with T-Mobile, the agreement that we have with T-Mobile. So in a nutshell, okay, we put that water tower in, we'll put the cell, the cell antenna is on top of the water tower. But we put that water tower back in, back in the 1930s, I believe. And at the time, we took that property where it actually sits is now town-owned property. I think we took it by eminent domain. But we also installed, obviously, the water pipes that lead up to it. That's on Church, that's on Sanian's property. And I just want to say, based on what I'm going to say for the record, I don't have a conflict. I'm not a member of Sanian's. And I'm not even Catholic, I'm Orthodox. So I just want to establish that.
I'm not Catholic, there's no conflict.
I'm just saying, I'm going to come out pretty strongly in favor of the church tonight, and I don't want any residents saying, oh, well, hold on, hold on, of course, she's a member, so she's going to feel this way. I toured the grounds, the water line is in the woods, and we took an easement with a public right-of-way, which you have to do because we need access to get to the water tower. That's kind of a given, okay? And they took so many, the town took so many feet on both sides of the, the water pipe to install a public right-of-way because without a public right-of-way, they would be walking through the woods in order to access the water tower.
And for reference, Mary, that's the sort of somewhat damaged road going up to where the, you know, there's the outdoors.
Got a crucifix at the top, it has our water tower, but, you know, I think my, my email, they didn't even call it a road. I don't even think it is worthy of being called a road, okay? But in any event, that road, and to me, this doesn't even matter, but it's questionable whether that right-of-access, now, which is the only access to our town water tower, is legally or technically on that right-of-way that we took, or it is beyond it. That's a separate question. The church isn't making, from the best of my discussion with them, although the church could take a different position, making an issue over whether it is or not, and I guess. We're actually trying to. We want to know. Serve it. But the point is, the right-of-way, the de facto right-of-way that we have been using for decades, almost coming up 100 years, is that road that I am saying is in a 100% state of disrepair. So the town has enjoyed that road as its public right-of-way, and it has not put the cell tower aside, because the cell tower obviously wasn't there in the 1930s, and has allowed it to fall in 100% disrepair. It's not safe, it's a hazard, there's rubble and rocks that are this big on it, potholes like you wouldn't believe. And this has been the state of affairs. It's the public right-of-way. It's our access to the water tower, and we had a duty to maintain it, and we did not. Over the years, I don't know who dropped the ball, what DPW or what, or the water department who wants to go up to the water tower. Like, how we missed this road, I don't know, okay? To the best of my knowledge, there isn't an agreement between the town and the church when this whole water tower went in. Maybe it was a handshake. His father Luke said, I don't know, it was a gentleman way to think, to do, but that's our road, and we haven't repaired it. Now, enter, I believe Jim Malloy was the town administrator at the time, and so I didn't overlap. Mary might have overlapped with Jim, but I didn't overlap with him as a town and me here. I think I might have been on the finance committee, but I don't remember. There's a lease agreement that was signed with the former Sprint, and in that lease agreement, it states that, under maintenance, that the, and it defines capital P property, and that's the actual area around the water tower, that they will maintain the property, wear and tear accepted, and the town will make repairs to the property and access there, too. So we had, like, in my view, a dual duty, separate duty to maintain it as the public right-of-way that leads to that water tower, and under our lease agreement, which we are still enjoying, I think you said, is it 3,000 a month or whatever? Well, the lease has ended, we are on a month-to-month. We are on a month, yes, but that lease, so the lease was for 15, five years. But through another provision of the contract, it either automatically renewed for three, five years, or five, three years. I don't really recall off the top of my head, but it renewed for another 15. And then it was month-to-month, it's like an evergreen clause that kept that active. So we're still enjoying, if you will, the fruits of our negotiated agreement, but access to that road, access to the property, which is that road, it's the only way to get there if you don't want to walk through the woods, is in the lease agreement, and we have, that's access, that's us. So all I know is the church was stuck between a rock and a hard place because what they did is put a chain, you know, thing saying no trespassing, attempting to close that road because it's not a road. If somebody gets, twists their ankle on it, that's a liability. You know, it's on church grounds, but it's the liability to the town because it's our right-of-way. So they put a chain. Robin went and saw it, our water department needed to go up to the water tower for whatever reason, and rightly so. But, you know, Robin said, no, you can't block that, that's the right-of-way. They were walking, yeah, a lot of guys were having to walk up. Right, but regardless, so, but what I said to both our chair and Robin in an email this morning is the much greater safety hazard was not their attempt to close it off because of liability for the town as well as the church. The greater safety hazard is that's the public way, and why hasn't our DPW been maintaining that? They should not have been in a position where they needed to try to close it to pedestrian traffic. We're not clearing that road. Now, I know they want to, I know we want to send a, we want to bid on the new, whoever is, and maybe T-Mobile is going to bid again on that cell tower. But long before that, we need to get in there, clean up the rocks, clean up all the potholes, and make that safe. And it's not fair to the town or that church to wait until the entire bidding process is over before we achieve that. That should be a priority of the DPW to get in there, clean it up, fix the potholes. And I might add, that's also the access that worshippers that go to the shrine use to access this crucifix, which is a few feet before the water tower. There's one way to get up it through stairs, but if somebody's handicapped, they can't go up all those stairs and pray. They would have used that road, and now they can't. But the bigger thing is, that's a public right-of-way, well, not bigger, that's just as big. There's a public right-of-way, and we need to repair it tomorrow. We needed to repair it yesterday. And I was very disappointed by the condition that I saw that road in. I took some pictures after our meeting, and I can show people, but the pictures really don't do it justice. You have to go up and look yourself. You go all the way up to the parking lot. There's a Madonna, and then there's a sign that says, you know, closed, authorized vehicles only. But you know what? You can't contract out of a tour, you know, so just because there's a sign there, that's our duty, and that's my pitch, and I'm, you know.
So it's a little, it's a little separate from the agenda item.
Right, I know, I know.
No, no, I don't want to keep Peter here and there. So Mary, go ahead.
Well, that's what I said, it's totally separate, and I would like to get all the information printed. Mary's talked to people, you've talked to people, Robin has, the rest of us haven't. I do also have pictures of the road, and I don't disagree, it's in rough shape. But we need to get the facts on, when was it done? I mean, who has the lease and all that before we, we can't go out tomorrow and do it.
I don't, I think that, so I want to, the, this is probably not going to all get sorted up this evening because I think there's a certain amount of information in terms of the point Mary's making, which is fair about preventative maintenance, and why hasn't preventative maintenance been kept up on the, on the trail? Where exactly are the boundaries, so everybody knows? You know, we're all crossing things, and then just sort of, kind of take all of that and sort of, kind of double back on the negotiations over the lease. So I think we probably, I think, I thank Mary for her effort on it, and I, I did, I went over there and took a look at it this afternoon, too. So if I was wandering around and everybody was like, what's this guy doing? That's what I did. I went, I went on my own. I was, I know, I was so, I was brave, you know? But I think that, but there's a certain amount of data, threshold data you kind of need to evaluate this, and I don't see.
Yeah, because, I mean, it goes back.
Yeah, it's a lot of history. Mary, you want to say something?
No, no, I'll let the rest comment before I say anything else on, you know.
I'd just like to see our town administrator gather the facts, get the paperwork, and then we can make a decision on what we can do. And I agree, we got to, if it's our responsibility to repair it, we've got to repair it, and we'll put it on the next agenda, and we'll get the facts and get it through.
There are a number of documents collectively that everybody should see, you know.
And it's a lot, you know, and this kind of goes to a larger point, and it's come up a few times, and it's not, not any critique of you or Michelle very in stretch, but it's just sort of, as we have these conversations, just, and down there, everybody's kind of got their feet underneath them, and we're kind of getting staff back and all that stuff. We just sort of having the, those sort of materials gathered for, you know, not this particular conversation because this has evolved a bit, but just sort of like, there is sometimes, some of these things are just going to be fairly technical and just making sure we have them. But that's always going to be a process.
I agree. But to get back to the.
Well, hold on, can I just have a chance to comment? Because I am going to, under old business, make a motion anyway on repairing, and I don't expect that it's going to go anywhere, but I do want it for the record. I think it's great to look at the documents, but the bottom line is, it is a road. It is the public way to the water tower. That's not negotiable, like, that's not in a, that's obvious. It is the only way up. That's why, by foot, our water department personnel needed them to take away the chain. It's not a question of, like, do you maintain it? Do we maintain it? It leads to the water tower. Every other road that leads to the water towers are in a state of repair. That needs to be done, with all due respect, you can look at the lease, what says we have the, that doesn't, putting that lease aside with the whole cell tower, that is the way to our public water tower, and the road is not passable right now. The DPW should go out tomorrow, sweep and clean all the rocks out of the way, and they should fix the potholes so that when our town administrator tells the church, oh, you've got to leave that open, that's a public safety. you've got to leave that open, that's a public safety hazard, because that leads to our water tower, and our personnel has to go up that road." If that's the position of us, our DPW should be there tomorrow, do they have to do a beautiful paved job? No, maybe we put that on the next bidder of the cell tower, but should that road tomorrow have not all those rocks, not all that debris, and those potholes fixed? Yes, that should be done with, not even looking at any documents.
But Mary, and I think that's a fair point, but I think that that one is probably within the purview of the DPW department as it sits right now. Two, I think you're right that they should be, I mean, they should go out there, and I, and maybe we, yeah, well, that's saying what I'm saying, but, but that's true, but it's not, my point when I, I was getting to the technical piece or the data points, it was not to say, "Oh, we don't, we shouldn't be doing anything, or we should sit in an activity," one of them is, is the DPW engaging on it, so it's, it's a good point of clarification.
But I don't think the DPW, from reading Robin's, feels that it's their responsibility right now.
I don't want to speak for the, for the DPW.
Okay, so, well, the thing is, hold on, it's been done for years.
We haven't seen any of that stuff.
Well, what, seen what, Mary?
Were you talking about DPW and corresponding with Robin?
Well, they haven't done anything to it. We have, we have, they have not maybe done the maintenance, but I think what's important is the DPW leadership, we have spent hours with Mr. Minual and the pastor trying to assess, because much of the damage on that roadway came from T-Mobile equipment, and there is an agreement and a responsibility that is separate from us regarding the major repair. Absolutely, potholes, things like that, yes, we could go up and do that, but it has, but I just don't want to.
But here's the thing, we don't, let's keep it moving forward, because this isn't, this is, so if there are things that the DPW can do that are quick and dirty to make it safer, and to clean it up, please ask them to do it, and don't, we don't have to get in too far afield with it, I wouldn't probably have them bring up a whole grinder.
No, no, we can fill the potholes, yes.
But if there's like, if there's easy things to do that are appropriate, please have them do it, and let's not get too bogged down on the technical pieces, but with that, we do have some leaseholds, some, some pretty understandable concerns from the church, and some vendors that are involved, so we just have to, you know, we just have to be deliberate, but with that, so I think we have a motion, do, so do we have a motion on the Church Street? Did you make that, Mary?
No, I'll make that now and get it out of the way.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we rename the water tower the Church Water Tower.
Church Street.
Church Street.
Yeah, I'll second it. All those in favor? All right, the ayes have it. Now, Mary, if you want to, I, I, I'm going to take it out of.
I'm happy with what was discussed.
Somebody out there to get the potholes.
If you, if you do want to make a motion, this is probably a good time to do it, just so we can.
It's going to be consistent with, with our Chair recommendation, we, we can't say, "You've got to open it without making it safe," that's the bottom line.
That makes sense to me. Okay, and, all right, so, with that, we're moving on to Action Item J, which is consideration and possible action on dock permitting and the harbor master.
This is a very umbrella discussion tonight, Lauren right now is working on a whole analysis of permanent docks versus temporary docks, we need to redo all of our temporary dock procedures, they're outdated and, and really not consistent, we have not asked people to permit temporary docks in years, yet we have references to 20 years ago with a lake that just came up today that has 11 docks permitted already, so all they need to do is literally say every year, "Hey, we would just want to keep re-permitting," but these are just coming up out of the woodwork. People are now calling in on neighbors, they don't have a permit, they do have a permit, it, it, it's just been neglected for years. So, Lauren is doing all of that. My question to the board is that you all are harbor masters, but when we get a call, and, and we discussed this briefly, when, when we get a call, the best I can do is maybe send Bill LaPage out, but he doesn't really have authority to determine whether a dock is permitted, not permitted, within the compliance, not within compliance, he, last time he, we got a call as a courtesy, he went out and he gave somebody the permit application and said, "Hey, you probably need to fill one of these out," but there's nobody there to really enforce, and you all, unless you want to go out of the boat during the day.
Well, get us some nice, nice boat.
I wouldn't mind it, I would, I, I, come on, I'd like to be designated to go on a boat personally all day and check the docks.
Do it on a jet ski, Mary.
But I do, you know, I would mention something. You know, I'm not ready to present any dock changes or whatever else, I have met with neighbors who have concerns about their permanent docks, I had a neighborhood meeting with three people who are up in front of Conservation right now, that's a whole bigger issue, and July 15th, or maybe, depending on, it might go into August, because we probably want the Chair here as well, Lauren is going to give us an overall presentation with recommendations from me and her combined on how we need to proceed with the whole dock thing. I did get a legal opinion from Brian Winter, Lauren is looking over that, that the DEP permitting is with DEP on the permanent docks, that the town does not have that permitting authority, however, the board can make recommendations to Conservation, she's going to loop all that into her recommendations. But tonight, what I'm asking you to at least consider, and I put it under possible action, but it doesn't have to be tonight, is how we want to do the, the enforcement and the review, and who's got a permit, and who doesn't have a permit, because you all are the only ones with that authority, and if you want to designate that, if you want to think about it, but it just needs to be on the radar to, as we move forward, because we are getting these complaints now in with neighbors.
My inclination is, and I know, I know someone feels, feels strongly about any of this, but the, my inclination is that, well, usually how it works in most communities I, I've seen, and I know a lot about, about Massachusetts Harbor Master statute for strange reasons, it's involved a lot of odd litigation, usually tho, those, if you're not having an actual harbor master, it's usually associated with either a permitting office of some type or the police department, and the police department has a boat that have, that they've.
Ooh, jet ski.
But that, so there is an element of, and it's a little, not really how we do a lot of our law enforcement work here, some places are a little more techn, you know, fire has inspectors, sometimes there'll be a little more in that space, but there is an element of knowing what is going on on the docks, that probably overlaps with some of, I imagine they're on the boat, the lakes a certain amount each year and that, so they probably would be, it's probably an easier way to do it, we'd obviously have to talk to the Chief about that, and maybe I'm, it's not even a good idea, but I think it's part of one of those things that, as we're looking at this, because what we, you know, and we are going to have these issues with the tension between permanent, large structures on the lake, conservation, our bylaws are kind of a little.
Sissing.
Sissinked, is that what you said?
We only did that because the state mandated.
I, I, no, I hear you.
No, I know, and then the state was doing it.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden, they said, "No, we don't do it."
Yeah, it's, I hear you, and it's, and it's always one of these, it's, these areas are always, it always goes by, the federal government says, "It doesn't matter what anybody below us does, we're the one in charge of the harbor," and the state says, "It doesn't matter what anybody else says, we're in charge," and then the town says.
No, and when we consider, I mean, we have lakes, but, you know, oceans, you know, it's a little bit different.
We have a citizens forum.
Oh, yeah.
Can I correct you on something?
Yeah, what's up, Peter?
Jesus.
Mr. Mimo, 76 South Shore Drive, so I'm on the lake, I'm on a, I'm on a Great Pond, which is a state-owned lake.
Sure.
Sturbridge has six of them, five of which have lots of cottages on them and lots of docks. I believe that I had the circumstances to do some work on my shorefront, and in the meantime, it was bumped up to the next level of Worcester DEP, because you have to work within the flood zone, and any work you do in the, below the high watermark in the flood zone, you have to have the proper engineering documentation to do that work. So, I fell into that category, but I'd like to let you know that my current DEP file number is still open until November of this year, I hope to close it out, my work is done, but in the process of doing it with Worcester, it was bumped into the waterways, Boston waterways, because of the flood zone work I was doing, and the, so in the waterways permit, the person that was supporting me from Boston asked me if I had a dock, and I said, "Yes, I do have a dock," and she said, "Why don't you put that on your permit?" Because if you, if you add it to your permit, you can have a 30-year license to keep that dock in the water year-round. So, you're, as harbor masters, you know the docks have to come out every year.
Well, this is the, this is the very tension we're talking about, because it's the versus the temporary versus the permanent structure.
All the temporary, because it's not in 20, you know, 12 months a year.
Sure.
That would be a special circumstance, if someone wants to leave it in, they'd have to come before you, but a standard dock permit that you guys work with, you folks that harbor masters work with, has to come out for like three or four months a year. So, she recommended that I put it in my permit, so I said, "Okay, fine," but I needed to have a current valid dock permit from the harbor masters, that was required, so I quickly made sure I had my yearly permit. You can't get a multi-year permit, it's a yearly permit. So, I had the, the year permit, I included the dock in the waterways permit, for all the work I was doing on the shoreline, now I have a 30-year, 12-month-a-year permit that I can extend easily for another 30 years. It was just automatically included in my work. So, waterways permit is, is quite technical, difficult to get, because you have to go from you folks to Worcester to Boston, all the paperwork, all the applications, but if you do it properly, they'll give you a 12-month-a-year, and they, if you only agree to 12, 25 feet in the water, that's all they're going to agree to too.
Yeah.
They're not going to say, "Oh, you can have 50 feet in the water."
Well, yeah, but that's, yeah, no, we appreciate it, Peter, and this is a lot of the, the stuff that we've been dealing with in terms of.
All, all my work I've done, I think I'm one of the only people in Sturbridge with all these docks in the water that has a 30-year license round, round year dock permit.
Well, the, the problem is, we don't know the answer to that question, and that's precisely what we're trying to, to reconcile here, because that, it is, we don't know, it's just getting organized.
Because our own procedure has to shield it.
And Michelle's done a great job on this, so we have a lot of organizational work to do, so thanks, Peter.
Say, it escalated up from the fact that I was doing one job, and then all of a sudden, I got to throw my dock into the permit, and now I found out the whole process to go to Boston and get a 30-year dock permit.
Technically, you could bring anything to Boston and sidestep anything, but that's a whole other conversation. Depends, depends who you help, Peter.
Thank you.
All right, guys, so I, I'm, what do you want to do?
Let me just provide a little input, because Marita Tassi, who's the Chair of SLAC, and she's the South Pond, at least she lives in South Pond, not Lawn Pond, representative.
Can you say the other name?
That Big Lawn?
No, that's Webster.
That's Chama Chunga, yeah, that's the.
It's Webster Lake.
Lakes, yeah.
Oh, Quam.
Qua.
Qua.
Come.
Quasit. Qua, come, quasit, okay, so, they, and I'm the, now I call myself the liaison, I think at some point, and this can all be part of like a review of everything for a special town meeting, they have a Board of Selectmen representative, and I think it's actually as a voting member, so for my first two years, I'd go to these meetings, they start meeting like in the spring, and they go to October, they're like six-month meetings, and the vast majority has like nothing to do with why a select person would need to be there or really to vote on anything, so that really should just go back to being a liaison position, because the things they talk about, neighbors, this, that, and, you know, jet skis too early in the morn, I mean, it, this doesn't concern us, but anyway, that's an aside, but that's why Marita reached out to me, and now they're falling under the Conservation Commission rather than directly under us, and so there, and they had some, last week, you know, there was some resignations, you know, two weeks ago, we accepted the resignation, so they're looking at their mission statement, and they said, you know, "What does the Board of Selectmen want from us in terms of what kind of advice we give?" So, you know, and I said, "Well, what do you want from us? I mean, we're here if you have a problem, the lake's not clean or an issue's going on." So, I don't know, I told Marita to reach out to Jamie and Robin if they do want to come before us, or I don't know if they should go before Conservation now, because they fall under them, or before us in policymaking, but I did mention to her that we were going to be reviewing our dock per, dock guidelines, which again, aren't a bylaw, it's our own guidelines.
It's a procedure, I guess.
It's a procedure, so she reminded me, and she's absolutely correct, first of all, SLAC would like to be involved.
And they should be.
In the process, they want to give some recommendations, they feel like they're the best to do it, because they live in the lake, which I would agree with, so, when we start doing this, I don't know, maybe we ask them to give recommendations again, or we have a joint meeting with them, I don't know how you want to handle it, but they don't want us to like.
To start doing stuff.
Start doing stuff, passing stuff, I don't want to say ignoring them, but like, not, not, yeah, bypassing them, so that's one bit, and she did, years ago, Mary was on the board, the three of you weren't, we tried to go over our guidelines, it was a fiasco, because different members of the then-board brought forward, you know, regulations like this, that they borrowed from.
Temporary docks, yeah.
For, for, from a coastal town, that's the harbor master on the ocean, it was, it was, it was kind of ridiculous, but in any event, so we didn't adopt them, and SLAC did give us guidelines that they wanted to see changed. I thought we changed a few things, but Marita said we didn't, so I don't know, we've, we've made this attempt one other time. My gut is that, before I even start to redraft or draft procedures, that SLAC comes in, and I, I really think one of the things, and I've been chewing on it a little bit today, the past few weeks in talking to Lauren, is that when we're talking about the temporary docks and the issue we had last year, when we went out and looked, our policy really didn't fit that particular cove. On paper, he was in violation, but a bunch of the other ones were too, and it was a cove, so it really didn't matter if they stuck out a little further, I almost think that we need to look at, does, do we have each lake committee propose their own regulations per lake, and then we collectively look at them, do we, because it's going to be chaos if we have different ones for every lake, but on the other hand, every lake is very different, and every area within the lakes are different.
So, here, my two cents on that is, is that there has to be hard guidelines and then a relief valve, because if you start, these get, this is, when you get into these individually, these are about as bitter as a dispute possibly can be.
Well.
Yeah.
No, I, I, I agree with the Chair, I think that the same guidelines have to apply to all five lakes, and then you have an exception clause, you know, where they come and say, and, and then you can do that on a case-by-case basis, because if one pond, you know, Big Alum's docks are allowed to be longer than South Pond, and that's going to be a major mess.
And then they're all kind of, they all have, in all of these lakes, Robin, which is, we have probably more of the benefit of just like growing up here, it's like all these lakes kind of have parts of them that are sort of the same, and then there's ones that have like.
Like that little cove area is very different from other parts.
But like, one could argue all of Cedar Lake is a lot of coves, like you go into parts of it.
Yeah, but this was.
No, I know.
That sort of sick, right? I mean, like.
And it's a family cove.
Right. It's like a neighborhood group.
But in terms of the enforcement, our Chair is correct, we've always used the police, and that was one of the reasons they've got that boat or whatever, they were supposed to patrol.
Right.
And they were patrol, also for drink, you know, there were concerns that people are drinking in the boats, but they patrolled, and that's what was the tip to us trying to amend the guidelines, because they said, "There's really no way to tell if, if somebody had a dock permit or they didn't," like, we don't require them.
And that's where we haven't even answered the question, we're permitting them, but where do we require them to post it, where do we, you know, and, and since we've now started, since it came to our attention last year that we weren't following the guidelines of people permitting every year, now what's happening is we have neighbors calling, because you said, as you said, it's contentious, neighbors calling on other neighbors saying they don't have a permit, they don't have a permit, and, and so now, we've sort of got a little bit of chaos. I think once we get through a round of everybody getting the first year of their permit, and then the next year, they say, "Yep, I haven't changed a thing," and it's a renewal, but we, we have to even figure where it can be displayed, so, because the cops aren't going to know who's got a permit and who doesn't when they go through the cove.
Sure, but they'll know what lengths are.
They'll know the lengths and things like that.
And so, so here's what I would say, I don't think this is probably, in my opinion, and I don't know if you guys agree, but in my opinion, I don't think this is probably something we wanted to start doing piecemeal, especially because it just.
It's all over the place.
Yeah, and so, and we just want to make sure we're sort of sorting it out, so, maybe we, I don't know, maybe we get through the rest of the summer, see what comes up even.
I was going to say, we, seems like we have time, I mean, we're into July now.
Well, the problem is, the docks are in the water, but the complaints are coming, and my neighbor didn't get a permit, so now I've got people kind of coming in now.
And we, but we're going to have to get them all gathered up and process them through, it's just going to take a year or two.
You're trying to get this enforced, and getting everybody on board has created, actually brought it up and created havoc, but it's a havoc we have to have.
It's just, that's the nature of it, so with that, unless the, anybody has.
Okay, just needed it on the table for discussion.
Well, I'm going to, is there a motion, or do we want to just move on to?
I think we move on at this point.
That's perfect, I just needed to have the discussion. I, do I need to make a motion that you involve SLAC, is there?
No, no, that would just, I would do that.
And you will reach out.
No, I, I actually would, I just, I just, you know.
Yeah, and I think Lauren's already sort of going in that direction with it, so.
Okay, great, so we're moving on, I'm going to make a motion to accept a donation of five $25 gifts, cars, shaws from Hollis Turnboat, on behalf of the missions tram of the Federated Church with, with our thanks and appreciation. All those in favor? Very generous. Very generous. Um, all right, consideration of possible action on the town administrator's percentage update, uh, increase, excuse me. Um, Robin, what are you seeking?
So I get the, by contract, I get the standard, whatever the non-union gets, which is 2.75. And then, uh, a merit bonus up to whatever the board so chooses. I did, by way of, um, information last time, share that our directors merit, those who believe, I believe have top performance, 3%.
I don't want to interrupt you, but just, let's leave with the number.
So, I'm interested in knowing what you did give, though.
No, no, but I just, it's helpful.
I did give three to all of my, to, to all of my directors that I do, I have five of them, I think, that I review for merit. I did believe they all warranted the 3%, along with the 2.75 non-union.
Okay, so that's a 5.75%.
5.75.
Okay. Do we have any questions, concerns from the board?
Okay, so you're recommending the same. You got the 2.7 already listed.
Right, that would be stated. And then the merit is your choice.
Yeah.
My inclination would be to round it to 6% and give Robin a 6% increase, including the two.
So that's a 3.3.
Yeah.
I will agree with, I would support that.
I would support it also.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't know if I do.
Well?
Well, only because, you know, we're statin' something here. There'll be a lot of flack from some people over it.
Well, the, I believe that the town administrator probably should have a distance between, as his chief executive of the community, should be a higher pay than it probably is already. And I think Robin's done a really good job. She's landed a variety of union contracts. And I understand people get frustrated, but I, with that, I, I think it's fair. Especially just, you know. So unless there's, um...
I just want to smear, is it because it's 0.3 higher than the other directors?
Uh, yes.
We budgeted a 3, though I know we can, you know, move around that.
But we have other things we spend it on, too, that weren't exactly budgeted.
Well, be that as it may, I still think, unless there's, Robin, am I going to create a major budget problem?
I think we get, the 0.25 difference won't create a major budget problem.
So you're saying 3. what on top of the?
3.25 on top of the 2.75%. An even 6 if I do.
Barbara will just have to do a transfer of, just a fin, for next, for this coming year, not this year we're in.
Okay. Um, anything else on this one? I'm going to make a motion to give a, uh, 2.75 cost of living adjustment and a 3.25 merit bonus to Robin and thank her for her hard work this year.
Second.
All those in favor?
And if I could, I'd just like to thank the board.
I'm just
Yeah, that's my thoughts for.
Yeah, we, she, she hates you. And that's what it is.
We already appropriated the 2.7.
Um, I do, I do, if I could just take a second, I do want to thank the board and the people of the town. It's, I'm at, just over two years in now. And, uh, it's just, it's a great town and a great place to work.
Thanks, Robin. We appreciate you.
We're glad to have you.
Okay, with that, um...
I added a, we have a new agenda item.
Yeah, so, um, and to the, the point we're making, consideration of possible action on the MOA dated June 28th, 2024, the town of Sturbridge and the Teamsters Local 170.
So I got a call last night, Sunday night, that they met and they ratified, um, with the changes that you all voted on in executive session. But for the purposes of the public record, I just want to read the key highlights of the MOA so the public knows what the major changes are. The wage structure for Article 7 is 2.75, 2% and 1.75% on the wage increases. Uh, the biggest change is the change from standard longevity, uh, where it's a flat rate of a couple hundred dollars. They had, of course, asked for increases in longevity. Instead of doing that, we moved to a wage scale to encourage retention. I've done this in other communities. Uh, once they hit seven years, they get a 0.5% step. All the longevity is gone, there's no money there. It stretches out, there's no more five-year, 10-year. It's at seven years, a 0.5, uh, and then a 0.65 an additional, uh, at 15 years, a 0.65 an addition, a 0.65 additional. And then at 25 years, a 1.25. So they sort of get a blowout if they stay with us. Uh, the, the cost in the immediate budget is a little bit on the overtime because this goes into their base wage. So it's a benefit to them as they stay longer when they're doing their overtime. The younger guys who do overtime, it's less of an impact on us. It does amortize out a bit more in retirement. But again, when you amortize that out across the span of retirement, it's less of a burden. So it's a way to encourage retention and recruitment, frankly. Uh, by spacing it out on the, the 7, the 15, and the 25 versus 5, 10, 15, 20, and 25, we save a little money to offset it, those operating expenses.
It seems like a great deal, Robin. Um, can we just, uh, any questions, thoughts, other issues from the board?
Nope.
The other changes were basically minor. And we will sign, draft a side agreement for those two firefighters that we felt were not hired at an appropriate rate to start.
That's an adjustment. Well, we just, first of all, we want to thank the Teamsters or, or, for their, uh, yeah, this is not easy to figure out these deals. And, and we do appreciate our unions and all the hard work they give us, do for us, excuse me. So , um, with that, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to sign the memorandum of agreement dated June 28th, 2024, between the town of Sturbridge and Teamsters Union Local 170.
There's a second.
Second.
Oh, sorry. Uh, all those in favor?
You'll have a hard copy signed contract. Jim is working on it today, by tomorrow or the next day.
Tell him we better have it tomorrow.
He must say tomorrow morning, he's eager. And I have to say, I really, I really want to thank them again, just like the police. We were able to get these done before the end of the current contract. And that's been, um, for, for our finance office, it's huge not to have to deal with retro pay.
No, we have special employees and
Yeah, we really do. They did a great job.
So, all right, old business, Mary Lou.
Nothing.
Mr. Chase.
I have no old, thank you.
You suck.
Very, very, uh, darling.
This is a little bit of old and new. Um, I think a while back, when Heather came before us, I thought I requested a road management plan to get a copy of it.
Yep.
Um, and I don't think we did.
Okay.
Um, and I don't mean this in any negative light on the DPW. I know they're very busy. But the amount of potholes on our roads right now, and I, is bad. Um, and I, I don't know, I, I feel like now it's the summer. And I know, you know, Heather and, and, you know, I don't doubt that she's right. She indicated that she knew there were a lot in one of our earlier meetings.
Not four people.
And that she had to wait. And because to do it too soon would actually have caused more, um, difficult, and that I had to wait, but they were on it. But now it's July 1st and, you know, my hobby is running. So I mean, I'm like on the roads and they're just in terrible shape. Um, I'll just bring up Church Street, Church Street Extension, for example, which is the road. There's two ways to get to San Ian's, Church Street and the extension, one's off of 148. And I took a picture of that, too. That pothole is so big that if a tire gets damaged on that and they come before us, I'm going to vote that we repair that, we repair that tire. I mean, and there's, you know, again, this is leading to a parking lot where they get, and they didn't bring up Church Street. This is just me going that way to get there for, for the tour.
Sure.
Um, the amount of people that go to that shrine and go to services there and CCD and whatever, like potholes like that, we, we shouldn't have. And there's a lot of potholes on roads right now. So, I mean, I, I just feel like that's got to be a DPW, um, priority this summer. And this road management plan, like, I, I'm sure we have one.
Yeah, I'll get that. I thought you had that.
You know, it, it rests, like, what roads are going to be done, what roads are priorities, what roads had potholes filled, what roads are due to be paved in what year. And, and I think we, we need to see that, that we're following it.
Makes sense. Um, and I imagine, if I remember, this is the staffing issue as much as anything, but
Yeah, no, like I said, I know they're busy, but I just
We'll be out there tomorrow, by the way, I just texted.
No, I, oh, good. I guess, no, but it's, it's, it's just, there's a lot of roads and that kind of thing will disappear.
And, and, you know, and staffing comes, staffing goes, and you can only control it. But to Mary's point, she did ask for this.
Yeah.
Uh, closing loop on it. Thanks for that, Mary.
Of course, that pothole is on church property.
That is not in the parking lot. I assume Church Street Extension Road is a public road.
Well, let's, let's have
If, hold on, if it's a private road, we still have a duty to fix potholes.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not saying, it's not a drainage problem, it's not paving. I would be very surprised, and I guess I don't know for a fact whether Church Street Extension is public or private.
I think it's public.
But let's, let's
I think it's public, too. But regardless, it's a pothole.
But this is a broader conversation into, to, to Mary's point is a fair one. If we have within private or public roads, or private roads, that we have sufficient stewardship over to have obligations to fill, or, or that there's public safety ramifications, um, vehicle ramifications for the town. And then, you know, I'm sure when Chase gets in, his next, blows his next tire, he's going to drive over there and try to put it on us. But it's, we're not going to go for that.
Right.
But the
I'm going to go with it at 6:00 right now.
So it, it's, it's very well stated and very important. I agree with you, Mary. But, um, Mary, with that, anything else, old Mary?
No.
Okay. Mary Blanchard?
Um, have we heard any movement on street road beach?
No, I have to contact the company and find out if they're willing to work with us. Because apparently it is their road. I cannot find documentation of when it got transferred over. I did try to do some research on that.
Well
Me too.
Yeah, she did have. Uh, I have a contact there. I just haven't reached out, frankly. But I do need to.
Well, let's, let's, uh, let's get the lawyers involved on that because it doesn't make any sense. My experience with that road having worked for the state, um, and having worked on that property extensively, what the particular access are. So I understand a vacuum does not indicate either side is correct.
Exactly.
And we're not going to take the position that a vacuum on some, when the road has been effectively closed, is that somehow has been transferred. Like, I'm not saying that it hasn't.
Right.
But I'm not accepting that.
And I haven't got any record of it.
Yeah, and so
Because I, I know the Army Corps I normally took some vote on that road because somebody was giving us some land on one side.
And Jeff looked into, I think it was Jeff that looked into putting in a new road. And it was like a $35,000 design cost. It was going to be huge.
No, that's not the direction this will go.
But that's not, yes.
There is a road.
There is a road there. That road was in, uh, the state operated that for the better part of 40 years. And then, uh, and the, and the Army Corps as well. So with that stated, let's, it's going to get beyond this, I think it gets the legal strategies. Please involve KP on this, Robin.
Yes.
And let's get, again, button it up on the front end, not scuttlebutt, because a lot of people are going to have a lot of
Everybody's got it.
I want to go swimming next.
I will tell you, I will say that I can say this, uh, Army Corps, I've worked with Keith, and, and as far as the beach itself, they are more than willing to work with us. We've looked at making those restrooms handicapped accessible. It's very doable. So the beach itself is very doable.
Let's have this all ready for town meeting next year.
Okay.
There's no reason next summer, like Mary said, kids, kids aren't swimming.
Yep.
In my bikini.
Listen, Mary, I'm, I'm, I don't have any comment. Moving on.
Have we heard any more about the marijuana issue?
Uh, yes. So, um, I, Dean from Local Roots, they are up for their, for their licensing, which means I do have to get, in fairness to them and HCA, I'm working with KP Law on that right now to get a draft HCA agreement. Uh, we will be going the route of, um, no automatic impact fees. Impact fees will be on, uh, an as happened, as on happening basis, which seems to be the way the Cannabis Commission is requiring that we go forward. We're working with KP again to ensure. The other thing is, we're going to put some indemnification language in, like if somebody left there and got in a crash and that stuff.
We don't have to get into the
But we are, we are, yes. So at least with Local Roots, I'm working on that one. And what I'm going to do is whatever we use as the basis for Local Roots, I'll work with Trish over at HEAL and do the same.
Okay. So, yeah, we don't need that level of detail in these conversations. That is a legal strategy that once we pass this, it's a
Well, it's also an update.
Yeah. Oh, no, no, I, yeah, no, I'm not saying we shouldn't be talking about it. I'm just saying, like, we don't have to tell
No, we're not talking about
Yeah.
That's all I had.
Great. Um, all right, I have no old business for now. Uh, new business, I'll start, I'm unlikely to be at the next meeting. So, uh, so that'll probably be, um, so Chase, you're on.
Oh, I got to go up with something real controversial and
Be a good one.
I don't think it's a good one.
And so, uh, with that, Mary Blanchard, new business?
Uh, no.
Are you going to be at the meeting following?
Uh, well, we'll see. Yeah, that's playing it as a lace.
It's up to the baby.
Oh, yeah. I don't think it's, uh, 6:30 at night, you're seeing the baby.
Wait, oh, never mind. I'll wait until after. Okay. Uh, I, no other business. I've complained enough tonight.
No, you were great. Um, all right, Chase?
No, no, thank you.
Uh, Mary Lou?
No.